Councilman Roberts. Councilmember Randall.
Here.
Councilmember Hearn.
Here.
Councilman Thomas. Councilwoman Patrick.
Here.
And I'm here for, um... As, um, Dr. Shaw.
Let's pray. Oh God, our Creator, our Savior, our guide, and the one who energizes and focuses us to your will. And I will pray indeed that you would be here as a very real presence in each of our minds, hearts, and lives. That indeed, the decisions made here and the actions instigated here and the guidance of this group might be due to your presence. I pray it, we pray it, in Jesus' name. Amen.
So, Councilmember Thomas, uh, first. Uh, citizens comments, uh, Laura Meppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Citizens and the city council. I've had an opportunity to look over the agenda and a couple of things, a few things on the agenda that I don't concern about. One is, I think the last meeting that I attended, there was a discussion about should the payment for the voluntary fire department? Well, I would like for the city council to pass on to the new city council, the paperwork that supposedly the city did in order to get the, the voluntary fire department. Well, I guess what, you know, my, my contention then was, the city never has paid. The fire department was not purely the city, voluntary fire department association. But now, the city's like that. The question is, how long does the seven fifty, seven hundred and fifty dollars last? And this, that's what they, one time, two nights. That was one time, two nights, or ten thousand dollars. So, I wanted to make that clear. And also, I wanted to make it clear that I think that we need to be the city attorney, I would request that the city council, I mean, city attorney looking, looking to that and advise you, uh, according. The second thing in the last meeting, uh, I understand the council, Marie Hearn was excluded from the meeting, from the executive session. Well, in that information that I just read today, uh, Mayor Dexon, you were named in the lawsuit. Marie Hearn was not named in the lawsuit but as an elected official and a general law citizen. She's been elected at large. She was not supposed to be out of the meeting. I mean, if anything, if anything came up and she said to anybody like you, it would be on you, straight and bad. So, what I said, I don't think is correct that she should have not been, because there were other issues. And also, I would ask the city attorney to announce tonight if any council members got eligible to attend the, the, uh, executive session, I would like for the council to admit and monitor. And I really would like to know, uh, one, my last thing of concerns about is the police department, uh, Mr. Michael Kelly. I heard that the, I was here tonight, that the council voted not to retain Mr. Kelly's, uh, service as a reserve officer. And obviously, I, I understand, I don't know this for a fact, and maybe you can help me. I understand that Mr. Kelly's still working for the city, I presume. I know, I know a city called Tunsil. Tunsil lost, became bankrupt because hiring reserve officers. And the reserve officer caused a problem that caused the city to go bankrupt. So, I'm not saying that, uh, Mr. Kelly is not qualified, I'm not saying that. The elected officials, the new elected rejoic of the elected officials voted not to retain Mr. Kelly's service. That's to your proof, that's why you're here. So, let's say, those are my comments.
Uh, sir, in your time, that's a fine. Let me do nothing here, because you, you're kind of talking about me here. Uh, when it, excuse me, so I can address the city council. Uh, I'm going to tell you a factual thing. Now, the city council cannot deliberate, but I can talk about something that's factual. And when it comes to executive sessions and discussions with council, I will decide whether or not there is a violation of my code of ethics and whether or not there is a violation of the, uh, Open Meetings Act, that's my seat. Uh, and I stand by the decision that was made.
You make the decision, old state.
I'm, I'm not, listen, I'm, I am the lawyer, not you. And I am the one that's hired.
You're not, you're not working on the case.
So, no, Dex, absolutely correct.
Right.
But we are not going to be discussing that case in this, in the public floor.
Well, I wanted to make it known that you need to tell the public about this.
My citizens comment. Yeah. David Allen.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, citizens. Uh, right on your agenda, and I want to share that with the, uh, city attorney, in your ordinance, it states during this timeframe, in terms of, uh, manner of addressing the council, each person addressing the council should step up, et cetera, et cetera. No person other than the council and the person having the floor is to speak during this time. And on your agenda, which you're posted on the website for the world to see, it totally states that the city council will listen to comments but cannot discuss. I would ask that the city attorney take a look at that, and you councilmembers, it's on your ordinance and since they're posted, you know, I'd just like us to get it right, because again, we are a city. And the other concern that I had was, uh, in looking at the posting for the city attorney's replacement, it mentioned, um, a high school or GED. In checking many of the other small cities, even they require a college degree. If you look at, uh, um, the mayor's report, which is, you know, has a lot of nice, wonderful information in it, my twenty-year-old son, who's got a couple of years of college, could not accomplish these goals that you want for the city, you know, and overseeing employees, administrative folks, the folks here. So, and, 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 um, while municipal experience is, I would think, possibly important, um, I would cite that our own Mr. Jones, who has done a wonderful job in pulling our office together, and I think it worked straight now. He's got a college degree from University of Houston, and he had no municipal experience, he's got business experience. The city is a business, folks, and we need to start treating it like one so we can take it to that next level. Waller and Hillstead have far too many businesses for us not to have what we have. I enjoyed attending, uh, Wingerita, uh, last couple of days, and I think it's a wonderful place, and I think it's going to be good. Problem is, it's a replacement. Brule Bakers was there before, and Free Scheme was there before that. Before that, it was Rawland, when I came here in the seventies. So, there's no progress on our business side. So, I would say, take a look at that. And in having worked with the EEOC for many years in Los Angeles, I see you've got that on agenda in the executive session, and it was on there last month. One of the things that you want to talk to your attorney about is, EEOC finds a fore cause or a no cause. And like Mr. Leverett, in having watched y'all go through the process and actually try to hire Mr. Kelly without going through the full process, that's a plus. So, that's not something that you all should be dealing with, and it's got to be him, because it can't be sex, because you've got women up here. It can't be age unless the person's over seventy, because we've got a couple of people that, that are kind of close. And, uh, it can't be African-American, because you all are. So, it's, that's the only thing that's left. And again, that's just because of my experience that I can cite that. Well...
Okay, and sir, your three minutes, it's fine.
Thank you, Linda.
And let, let me take the opportunity to point something. I think you had referenced that the statement in here that city council will listen to the comments but cannot discuss or respond to the comments. I understand that, that makes a lot of sense, but it's not the law.
I know, our ordinance are the laws for the city.
Yeah, but I'm talking about the Open Meetings Act. The Open Meetings Act states, that's state law. And under the Open Meetings Act, the council cannot deliberate or discuss a matter unless it is listed on the agenda. And when people come forward with their comments, they're frequently talking about things that are not on the agenda. And they can only deliberate matters that are on the agenda. Now, if you read what we've got here, there's another sentence that says, "The matter may be referred to a department head or city council may direct that the matter be placed on the next regular city council agenda." That's really all that they can do.
Right. Well, you have an agenda section. This is not the agenda section, and I would ask that you look at it. I agree with you, the agenda section says, if it comes up here, it's got to go to the next meeting, because it wasn't on agenda. We're talking addressing the council and the time limit. Nothing to do with the agenda itself, just the section on addressing.
Thank you, Ms. Allen.
Yes, sir.
Mind the break.
Good evening, councilmen, citizens.
Evening.
How much as it pains me to be up here, I have to clear myself. I need to refute a few things in respect to the fire department. I recently resigned from the fire department. The reason why I resigned was not because of a water bill, it was because of lack of trust. I was also, uh, informed that I had asked somebody to leave the department. I never asked anybody to leave the department. I explained to my officers why I was leaving. The one in particular, Mark Shaker, responded to me by saying he would leave, but he would be worried about the retaliation between him and his kids. But I had no time, I had never asked anybody to leave that fire department because of me, because of my actions. So, I wanted to clear that air up on that. I was also told that I didn't have any certifications to hold the position I had, which is not true. I'll pass this on to the council, they can review it. This was mine immediately after this, I took this class in '08 at Carroll and Fire Department, they asked me to review it. This is my safety or, uh, officer completion cert. Up until the last cert I took in 2013, I stayed up on my training because I took what I did very serious. I was dealing with somebody that was ultimately having the worst day of their life. So, I made sure I knew what I was doing. So, to sit here and say anybody had to make a comment that I was not certified is completely untrue. Um, I'm not, I'm going to pass you, uh, as far as the, uh, my lawsuit, I'm the one that filed the lawsuit. It's a lack of trust from the mayor. I will pass the, I will pass you my summary of it, so I don't cross any lines with the attorney. And you all can read and get out of it what you want. I'm going to be litigated and the truth will come out. Did everybody get a copy of my cert or safety officer? I took this class at Carroll and, and if I recall, I paid for it out of my own pocket, night, night class. As far as the other guys, I don't know what they're, I told them to do what's, and when Mark made that response about the, uh, retaliatory issues with his kids and maybe him, I told him to do what was best for his family. All right, thank you. I love serving the city. Just to give you some insight, I was the one that, um, myself and Ms. Hearn stayed up to three AM one morning, riding the first brand, uh, first brand new fire truck that's the city, but at the fire department only. It was a hundred, a two-hundred-and-ten-thousand-dollar truck, we got it for ten thousand with the grant. And that was the very first new fire truck. When the Wildland fires, I fought, I worked in the Homeland Security Command trailer. The DCT and the big super school were landed in Waller, I mean, in Waller County first, or dropped their, their carton, their, a plane retardant. And, um, it was between us and two other counties. I fought to get ours, and we were the first one to get the drop there, because of that. So, I've known most of you, you all have seen me on the scene. I'm very diligent in what I did, I, I've sacrificed a lot with my family, coming out here fighting fires. I spent eight days on the fire ground.
Mr. Mayor.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, I hope that we give this person more time. Would you probably second me and, um, bring me on?
It bothers me because... The mayor was, uh, was my mentor. I was a student, I joined this department. And to see what's happening, it bothers me. All I've ever tried to do was do right by the city, try to get back to the city. I hope this thing can get resolved, but, you know, unfortunately, there's some powers that don't want it resolved the way it should be. So, you know, let's pray on it and hope y'all can come to a common agreement.
Yeah.
I'll pass out my summary of this. This litigation.
Ms. Paula Davis White.
Praise is everyone. My name is Paula Davis White, and I'm going to continue my comments regarding construction, city home building project. Remember what I previously said, that urban construction owed the city of Purview, uh, any citizens and new six speakers? The city would never acknowledge my claims. In fact, I was told by both the city attorney and Jake J. Johnson on communication that urban construction was not indebted to the city and did not owe any money to the city. My response then and now was that I had documents that I obtained from the city home building itself that goes otherwise. Okay, well, guess what? A lot of it was provided to me by another citizen that obtained it through a formal, open request record that said, "This letter is from the city attorney to, to the city council, dated November twentieth, two thousand fourteen." It states that the city was forced to pay a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars to subcontract this, that this urban construction fell to pay. Now, this amount does not include cost overruns, legal fees, entrance, building lease, et cetera, that are normal costs associated with this type of project. This is why I've been requesting on numerous occasions for a full third-party audit accounting of the outstanding funds owed to the city of Purview citizens and taxpayers by nation, national urban construction. The mayor has previously stated that the city council decided not to pursue litigation on urban, national urban construction. There is no documentation to support this. I know because I requested it. I have yet to be seeing anything, and I requested that through open records requests. This is why I'm asking for the, I have to be placed on the agenda in order for the city's citizens to know what it's really owed. I have also submitted another form of open request for access to the minutes and agendas for two thousand and eight. That request has yet to be honored. This is a simple request, you can, uh, Waller, Hillstead, websites and access minutes and agendas from, uh, several years, no problem. Why is that not available in City Purview? In the December two thousand and fourteen Waller County New Citizen article, Freddie Robinson states that in response to the letter request from Mrs. Paula Davis White, Mayor Jackson read a draft letter from the attorney to be sent to White. For the record, I still have not received official letter from the city or attorney as promised by the mayor. Once again, it is time for the city council to step up to the plate and correct what the past city council members did not take care of years ago by making urban construction accountable for their actions. Let the rest reflect that all monies owed to the city is accountable. Thank you very much.
All right, we got, um, citizens comments. Citizens comment. They're going to do the presentation, I've got a few things I want to do on the citizens comment. We've got, uh, three packs along here, this time to, uh, city party. It's been done for a few minutes. Officer Chris Garrett, come forward, please. Right, he's coming, uh, Mr. Carl Jones, come forward. Mr. Jones is, uh, announced his retirement. And I'm going to present the plaque, Mr. Jones. This is presented to Paul Jones with recognition and appreciation and esteemed service, guidance and devotion to the citizens of the city of Prairie, U. Texas. October first, two thousand and seven, to January third, twenty fifteen. Serving as city secretary and city administrator. Thanks for your service, congratulations, the best wishes on living time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Officer Garrett. Now, this award was determined by staff. So, I'm there, you turn your head to the top. This is presented to Christopher Garrett as an honor of the year for two thousand and fourteen with the city of Prairie Police Department. Thanks for your services, presented on twenty-seventh day of January two thousand and fifteen, and there's a perennial plaque on the wall outside the door where the next person will be called. Congratulations on that. All right, and the last one, this is, uh, presented to, uh, Dr. Veronica Harvey Shaw, will you come forward? This award is presented to Dr. Veronica Harvey Shaw, Special, Special recognition of your volunteer services to the city and citizens of Prairie, U. Texas for hosting the National Night Out program, City News Hour, and dedicating time and keeping Prairie, U. D. Thanks for your service, this is presented on twenty-seventh day of January, two thousand and fifteen. John D. Jackson. Thanks, everyone, Agenda's number five. Presentation of My Brothers Keeper Action Summit, by Councilmember Laura.
Good evening. Um, on January of seventeen, uh, we were, uh, we had a opportunity, the city of Prairie View, uh, to host a program called My Brothers Keepers Program. Uh, this initiative was initiated, uh, from President Barack Obama and initiative that the city of Prairie View was one of a hundred cities uh, that accepted the challenge with the My Brothers Keepers Program. Uh, there are only, uh, five cities in the state of Texas, and the city of Prairie View was one of them. From that opportunity, we, uh, submitted documentation saying that we're going to focus on two areas. There are six areas, um, in which, uh, the council has some paperwork. And I actually have, uh, the copies of what was handed out at the summit that we had on January seventeenth. So, if you would like some information on what people who came, it was, uh, held, uh, at the Saint Francis of Assisi Church on January seventeenth. Everyone is welcome to come out, we had about sixty-five people come out. It was the same time during the men's breakfast. At that time, we passed out information about the My Brothers Keepers Program, and I put it here if you want to, uh, look at it. The, the, the program was really about highlighting and talking about, um, uh, at, you know, uh, about what we're doing in this community, having small dialogue and some engagement from citizens. Um, everybody from all ages is welcome. And what I'm just doing tonight is just kind of updating you on where we're at. The, the, uh, national summit, well, is tomorrow, um, in Washington, D.C. But as you know, uh, no one's going to Washington based on the weather. Uh, but it was our opportunity, one, uh, to again, continue to push through positive programs that are impacting, uh, the Prairie View community. Um, and two, if you hadn't had the opportunity for you to know what's going on. We're asking for all organizations, there's a, a information sheet called My Brothers Keepers information sheet that I put together, and it's asking how you want to participate as a youth mentor, a team mentor, a peer mentor, role model, summer programs, uh, as a guest speaker, semi-engagement. Uh, there are two areas that, uh, the city, um, accepted this proposal that is submitted. Um, and those two focus areas, I'll read you the six areas. The first area is ensuring all children enter school cognitively, physically, and socially and emotionally ready. The second was ensuring all children read at grade level by third grade, fourth, uh, the third one was ensuring all youth graduate from high school. The fourth was ensuring all youth complete post-secondary educational training. The fifth one was ensuring all youth out of school are employed. And the sixth one is ensuring all youth remain safe from violent crimes. So, we have to pick two out of the six. The city of Prairie View picked one, ensuring all children enter school cognitively, physically, socially, and emotionally ready. And number, and the last one, number six, was ensuring all youth remain safe from violent crime. Um, so, so I know as a community, we all can get behind those two action items, um, if, if we can't do anything else. And so, the goal is to host another meeting here at City Hall next month with community members coming out with their, as stakeholders, along with their organizations, any organization that come could participate. When we're going to be submitting our after-action plan, we're going to list all organizations or anyone who wants to participate. This is open to everybody. Again, you, you have, uh, on, on the, with the form that I have up here, are the two areas that the city of Prairie View has identified. If you have any thoughts on how, how you can help or how one, or how you want to get engaged, please let me know. Again, um, I want to just read real quick some of the things that came out from the meeting on Saturday uh, in reference to ideas. Uh, I created, I facilitated a workshop at the, um, so we did small groups, so everyone broke into small groups and worked with their neighbor. Then we came into large groups, so we had a discussion and dialogue about how these things would work in, in our community. Uh, one, we were just talking about how can we better engage communication between church, agencies, organizations, businesses, and community and our youth? That was the first question. Um, some people talked about identifying a cause, uh, tying in groups with current, um, current information, um, be proactive, not reactive, identifying people within each organization, um, a need for the city to hire somebody, um, who, who's, who commun, who communicated that, um, represented from, uh, workshops, meeting like the radio station, technology methods to communicate, social media, and working, identifying key people, um, for unity. That, those are some of the things that came up from all the groups. So, we let all the groups share that all these things came up. The age varied from the members who were Boy Scouts in Troop nineteen oh six all the way up to our most senior, um, uh, citizens in the community. Uh, the second question was, how can we better engage commu, communication between churches, agency organizations, between business and the community? So, the first one was youth, and the second one was community. Some people said tr, using churches as, as a rallying point, a newspaper, using a radio station, against social media. And then someone identified the men's breakfast. If you don't know, the city, the, not the city, there is a men's breakfast in the city of Prairie View at Saint Francis of Assisi that happens every month. It's another way that people have learned to communicate things here in the community. Um, we could, how, how could we communicate with this? You know, again, we talked about Waller County and other things. The third question was, what are the best ways that we can, that we as a co, co, community can better support youth in our area through mentoring and community involvement? That was the third question. Some people just talked about mentoring in schools, you have organizations do that. Uh, we have some organizations in this community that also does that, so we, we wanted to highlight that in our after-action report. Uh, campus activities with the university, we talked about, um, community, citizens also mentoring of the students we have on campus, young adults. Uh, we talked about networking through church, one-on-one, having law enforcement, and we talked about the Boy Scouts, Troop nineteen oh six. We have a, a local troop here in this community, please come out and support. Um, we've, uh, had the troop here for the last three years. Um, and in the city of Prairie View and, um, another organization, Alpha Phi Alpha, was the charter or members of the organization to bring the Boy Scouts back to Prairie. They'd been here before, this is not the first time. But the goal is to make sure that we maintain a sense of community and we're, uh, impacting young, young people. Um, some people talked about getting involved, using the PAC, and just volunteering, talking about saving our schools. We also had Mr. Dr. Sam Arumba. We also had Mr. Dr. Sam Arumba, who talked about CTC communities that are here, trying to implement some of the things he talked about into the city's plan. The fourth question was how can we ensure that all youth are cognitively, socially, emotionally, and physically ready for schools and, and safe from violence? And that was getting, creating programs from, with our police department, but also getting schools involved with, you know, cops and some of the other programs. And us just creating what we wanted to create. Again, I put this out there because when we have our meeting in February here at City Hall, we want everyone to have, to, to give their input and have dialogue. We're going to take those four questions, transpose it, and we're going to come out with a community action plan. We had a community action summit, January seventeenth. We have a pre-work to a plan, but before we put the final stamp on our plan, we want to have another dialogue with community citizens who will be available. Information will be on the, City Hall, we'll send out regularly, and we'll put it posted up on City Hall. So again, also, everybody who came also received a certificate of participation. And again, in My Brothers Community Summit, Action Summit. So again, you missed a treat if you missed it, but we want everybody to be involved or engaged. We have some materials if you want to get any materials that from the meeting. So thank you for indulging me. On again, a program that has nothing to do with me, but more to do about our community.
Thank you, sir. For your action on that item. Item number six, approval of ratification of account payables for January twenty-seventh, twenty fifteen.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve it with the exception of the seven hundred fifty dollars to the fire department until we get clarification on our being able to actually make that donation every night.
Remove proper second and approve the ratification of account payables except for funding to the voluntary fire department until we get clarification on that issue. Because the motion and the second are ready for the question.
Question. Is that something that we illegally, that we're in? Are we in litigation about that? Or is that something that?
It's an agenda item.
So why would we?
It's going to come up in the budget.
It's also a budgetary distraction. You already approved it. It's part of funding, what is in your budget. And so I guess what you're asking for is a, is a minimum, budgetary minimum?
It was approved in the budget, but why is it even in the budget? We don't have it, we don't have documentation that we even supposed to have this in the budget. And until we know that, first to continue paying it.
Well, I guess my concern is you've already approved it. You've already approved it.
So we already approved the police, the budget was for the police salaries when we changed it?
Yeah, so that's why I was asking, I was asking to amend the budget. Is that what you're asking for? And I could perhaps present an ordinance and stuff like that. I think that's what you're trying to do.
No, I'm just trying to get clarity. That's what I'm trying to do. Keep us transparent and accurate.
Councilmember, you remember the fire department until September.
And I never got anything on that.
You were a member of the fire department.
And that, what does that have to do with this?
You never asked that question?
I never asked that question before.
You never asked that question?
Do we have, do we have any documentation on how much is owed, who is owed to? How much you pay?
It wasn't owed, and, and Mayor Leavitt brought it upon the bound. It was a one-time deal. How, how many years were you there? How many years?
Oh, I don't know.
How many years did you spend there? At least ten years. Ten years, is what I said. Then you make a payment? Did you ever say one-time donation? Did you make, did you make payments during those ten years? Every year? No. Every year? One-time donation?
You made a one-time payment, ten thousand dollars, so it should have been paid off? Is that what you're saying?
No, no, that was paid to, to who?
Okay, okay. I think we're kind of getting off. I think we're kind of getting off.
Ten years, you made the allocation.
And it's a gratification of the council.
That's until September. This was not, this was something that they couldn't, they weren't doing the budget here and otherwise. So I think we need to do this as a budget item, rather than just take action on this item. This is just a budget for action, this is limited to the budget. It's already been approved.
But do we have the right to approve it? We just don't have documentation. I asked, I put in a public information request for that documentation. I have missed it again. Told it was destroyed and approved.
Since we were already approved the budget in this line item, this, what the, so there was a motion, there's a second, and we're in discussion. Is that motion out of order?
No.
Because how can we suspend? Yeah, we have the right to do that.
I would, I would prefer to have the proper documentation in front of you if that's what we're doing, if they're going to amend the budget. And I can have something for you to add to it.
Well, I would, I would submit that this is more retaliation than it is. We'll see. The fire department is probably going to come up in litigation. And I would just say that the council may need to reconsider this motion until after.
And they will be discussing that at a later time as well.
That's my caution. The council should do what they want. If the fire department is being pulled into something totally unrelated.
This is being discussed later on.
It's an agenda item, but it's preempted on the agenda item. So, and, and these are ratifications, the money's already been paid. That ratification's already been paid. This is a ratification, because it was paid in the court of justice.
But it was paid according to what we're supposed to be doing. Do we have documentation? Do we have documentation? Well, they put anything on the budget, just put it.
Well, I, I think we have a valid budgetary item at this point, and so, but we prepared the documentation.
The council, you know.
Mr. Mayor, call for the question.
You've already paid, we already.
Call for the question.
Previous question. All is in favor of the motion, stay there, indicate by saying aye. Those opposed?
Most opposed. Mr. Mayor, I move that we. Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the ratification of accounts payable for January twenty-seventh, twenty fifteen, as stated.
Remove proper second and approve the ratification of the council. All is in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, those opposed?
Aye.
Item number seven, approval of a minute from December sixteen, twenty fourteen. I, I don't have a confirmation.
It was emailed to council.
Could we come back to that? What about the both, both of those minutes?
No, we have second.
You have second? Okay. Let's go to the main, give the chance to review items. Item number seven, approval of minutes from January sixteen, call me if it's your pleasure.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember.
I mean, for the approval of the minutes from January sixteen, if you guys are interested, call me.
Second, remove proper second and approve the minutes from January sixteen, call me if you hear the motion. Second, are you ready for a question? All is in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, those opposed? Ayes have. Item number nine, discuss take action on approving RFP to construct an eight-inch wastewater force water line of Richard Road to Richard Road Lift Station. City engineer, it's lined up.
Mayor, council, my name is David Landecker, we're playing, Landecker.
You come up here if I say.
Okay. My name is David Landecker, we're playing, Landecker Engineering. We're here tonight to discuss rerouting the force mains from High Point Lift Station, which is on Richard Road where the apartments are north, and take it up to where the Richard Road Lift Station is north of the two ninety bypass. Right now, the force main goes south and gravity flows across the railroad track, across Business two ninety, into Proverse Lift Station, which is overloaded. And it comes back north, across Business two ninety, back across the railroad track to the Alta Vista Lift Station, and then re-pumped again to the wastewater plant up the side. This would take two of the lift stations' head capacity back into Proverse, which is badly overloaded and, and, and some maintenance problem on constant basis, especially when it rains. It would ultimately save the city some money, add some problems with TCQ. The sooner or later, they're going to come down hard on the city of Prairie View. That Proverse Lift Station is a, is a problem.
Now, Mr. Landecker, we had talked about two scenarios. One is just rerouting the wastewater straight down from High Point Lift Station, which is right there at Richard Road and Business two ninety, going across US two ninety to the Richard Road Lift Station down by Palm Street, then by Force Main up to the Sewer Station.
Right.
And then the other scenario was connecting, I think, connecting High Point to Greenfield.
The second phase is then hook Greenfield up to that same force main.
Second phase would bring Greenfield online and hook that, so this is the first phase you proposed in the line.
This is the first phase.
Try to make sure the council understands.
This is the first phase, but if you look at cost, just when I think, I might have cost up. There's a line item at the bottom there. That line is sized where we could add Greenfield to it at a later date. So there would be some additional capacity created for the downtown area. Because it gets routed south and it goes up through the ten ninety-eight, all the way through the downtown area of Prairie View to the Alta Vista Lift Station. So it will, it's a two-phase project. This is the first phase. Mr. Jones, I think is coming to the bond money left to accomplish this.
We talked to Mr. Johnson. Mr. Johnson, you want to speak to that?
And looking at the proposal, two hundred eighty. This would be the first major expenditure in reference to the sewer and a lot of bond money that we, that we got a couple of years ago. Total amount of bond funds that we do have are basically at this time is one million forty-five thousand nine seventy-five. So this amount could be accommodated, and that's what that fund is for. It's dedicated strictly for sewer and water improvement, and that's what this is.
How much you told?
Pardon me?
How much you said, the total bonus amount we have?
At the current time, we have a thousand, I mean, excuse me, a million forty-five thousand nine seventy-five. It, it's on your financial, if you go to page eight, you'll see it on your financial.
We were able to save the city a lot of money by getting a grant, two phases, two grants, to do the water plant up on the north side of town of the One U Waterwell. So we were able to save the city a bunch of money there by the grant and stuff. But this is something the city desperately needs to stay out of trouble with TCQ.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question? Mr. Landecker, will this hand relieve the people who live in, in the Richard Grove area? From time to time, they get backup and stuff like that, will they?
Richard Grove then backup.
Richard Grove then backup.
It's the people south of, from this lift station, High Point, to the south into the downtown area. It'll relieve that whole area.
And then relieve that going behind the showers house that cuts down through there.
That's where the backup is, in Shower's yard, by the way.
Yeah. It will help all of that.
It stops that. You'll be at the end of the line, Doc Shower. Please stop this. It's bypassed your property.
It, it takes, it takes, the only someone to be on that end of the gravity line, once this is rerouted, is Dr. Shower's house. It takes all of the departments out of that gravity line and send it up to Richard Grove. The second phase being Greenfield, once you get Greenfield in, it takes that whole half that city out of Alta Vista. Because right now, eighty-two percent of your whole wastewater flow is running through Alta Vista. Take about half of that out for any future development. And we are eligible to apply for another wastewater grant in twenty sixteen. So we may be able to hang on and go for another grant on that second phase to help out the connection of the Greenfield part. But this is a, this is a dire need.
If the council approves this tonight, Mr. Landecker, how soon can we get started on this project?
We could have the bids ready in February, for your February meeting, and then construction will start probably following.
So we told you, let the bids after tonight.
Well, we would come back to you in your February meeting and open the bids in, in public forum.
Because this is the first one.
And we'll have to, you know, go in front of the newspaper, publish twice. First time has to be fourteen days, and follow the state law.
Yes, sir. My mind was going to be, how long is it going to take this project, phase one project, to be done?
We would have it done probably till later part of this summer.
So this is not going to affect Palm Street? Because you know that pump station, when it rains, that pump station floods, you're going to have the trucks to come out? So what if things is going to happen to Palm Street?
Palm Street is a blocked flood plain. That, they put their new lift station in. But the line deck designed that, designed that above the flood plain. So even though it looks flat down in there, you'd have to be above the flood plain.
So they don't have to bring your trucks out anymore when it rains?
Right, we fixed that. We got a grant, the city got a grant for that, and we were able to redo that lift station. As far as I know, it's never flooded since.
I don't know, since we put that one in there, about two years ago, three years ago?
The only reason, only reason the trucks would come out would be the, be the pump going down or something like that.
They have to pull the pumps.
If the pumps fail, then they got to.
They pull them out, but.
So that's not going to have any effect on the pumps failing and the people on the other end of Richard Grove suffering?
I don't think the pumps fail, but that's, that's, that's the end of that stage.
Well, actually, the people on the other end of Richard Grove are up on Soli. They should never have a problem, because all their flow is going to drain to the south like traffic. So they should never have a problem unless you have a line plugged up or something. This, this shouldn't cause any problem. It ought to help all the people on the city, because their guts of the city are for it.
The council, if I may, where it will help to minister is the Alta Vista Lift Station. The Alta Vista Lift Station is running twenty-two hours a day in a twenty-four-hour period, that's close to hundred. Richard Grove Lift Station is running forty-five hours a day. And that lift station is the same size of Alta Vista. So like I said, you're bringing eighty-three, eighty-four percent of your city's wastewater through Alta Vista. You've got to get that load off Alta Vista. You've got a regular lift station that's over there. That's running four hours a day compared to twenty-two hours on the other.
One of these days, the city may want to consider going with your own wastewater plant. I don't know that right now that you can afford it, but most of the times, wastewater plant is on the lowest end of the city. Everything gravity flows as much as you can. Prairie View, the lift station's up on the hill, and it has to be pumped and repumped to get there. There's lots of maintenance, a lot of expenses, electricity goes down, and it's a problem. Now, we just put some generators in. The city did get a grant, two generators, and we just put two generators in, and completed that about six weeks ago, so that'll help. But I would recommend that you get the project started.
Well, one of the things that, there's some of the, we're all working to try to get that sewer treatment plant. That's one of our highest costs on the water bill, is wastewater treatment. That puts it at square on the city to be able to determine the building, whether in the university, which treats the wastewater. So we've, we've been looking at those can units. And that's one of the items that we seem to be looking at is getting our plant. But it would have to be on the south side to get the flow, get the gravity flow. So if we go that way, this would be easy to reverse the flow of these pumps, to pump it back across over there towards Greenfield.
Yes.
What's your pleasure? Y'all got any more questions from this line deck?
So just, just to be sure, you're saying this project is going to alleviate the problem that Dr. Shower has, so that it's back in his yard?
It's going to make it tremendously better. You know, if we get enough rain and stuff, it may still make it a problem. This will make it so much better than it is now. Because what happens when those pumps cut on, you get a tremendous shot of pressure there, and it's forcing that water out of the lines.
But the water, the water won't be coming through his line anymore. He'll be at the end of that line.
Yes.
Too much by itself, so it's going to come up probably here. So we redirect the flow, everything, everything coming out of those pumps, coming in and be pumped back in.
How do we, can we just explain this real quick? The, the process that we've been doing for all the RFPs has been put in the paper twice?
Yes, sir. We follow the state law for all the cities. We put it in the local paper, and it has to be published at least. Why it's the first time, it has to be at least fourteen days before we can bid. And we also, as an engineer, notify all the contractors, around the local contractors and stuff, to make sure that everybody has a chance to bid on this project.
So, you said one more time. Now, this will not solve Dr. Shower's problem?
It will solve Dr. Shower's problem probably ninety-nine percent of the time. We get a hurricane in here or something, I can't say what happened, but.
Probably those parts, you know, going to be a TCQ issue for the city.
Yeah. Yeah.
What's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor?
Can I say anything?
I move that we approve the RFP to construct the eight-inch wastewater force water line up Richard Road to Richard Road Lift Station.
Second, we move the part of second, that we approve the RFP to construct the eight-inch wastewater force water line, uh, I'll be sure, I'll be sure. If you hear the motion second, I'm ready for a question, question.
All of the papers, questions? I think in your motion, you do have to add, be funded from the, from the, uh, bond. Very important that you have that in your minutes.
To be funded by, from previous bond money?
From the, uh, two thousand and eleven general obligation bond.
To be funded by the two thousand and eleven general obligation bond.
Would you say to motion?
I move that we approve the RFP to construct the eight-inch wastewater force water line up Richard Road to Richard Road Lift Station to be funded by the twenty eleven general bond, uh, funds.
General obligation.
General obligation bond.
Second, we move the part of second, that we approve the RFP to construct the eight-inch water wastewater force water line up Richard Road to Richard Road Lift Station to be funded by the twenty eleven general obligation bond. Heard the motion second, I'm ready for a question, question. I was a favoring kid by saying aye, aye, I was opposed, aye, thank you, sir.
Thank y'all, I will be at the next meeting with the, uh, the results, real quick.
Alright, thank you, sir. Item number ten, discuss and take action on ordinance number oh-two-seven-two-oh-one-five, authorizing mayor call for an election to be held May ninth, two thousand fifteen. For the purpose of electing three city council members, positions, uh, positions one, two, and three. Incumbents are Brian Rowland, City Councilmember, position one, Jonathan Rambles, City Councilmember, position two, Dr. Hyland, City Councilmember, position three. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember?
I move that we approve ordinance number zero-one-two-seven-two-zero-one-five, authorizing mayor to call for an election to be held May ninth, two thousand fifteen. For the purpose of electing three city council members, to be elected.
Second, we move the part of second, that we approve ordinance number oh-one-two-seven-two-zero-one-five, authorizing mayor to call for an election to be held May ninth, two thousand fifteen. For the purpose of electing three city council members, position one, two, and three, Brian Rowland, City Councilmember, position one, Jonathan Rambles, City Councilmember, position two, Dr. Hyland, City Councilmember, position three. Motion second, I'm ready for a question, question. I was a favoring kid by saying aye, aye, I was opposed, aye, thank you. Item number, y'all go back and get the minutes, first one, have you had a ch- chance to look at that? Yeah, Ms. Tuck, you gave me a copy though, from the, the first one, number seven, December sixteenth. Okay, alright, alright. Uh, item number eleven, discuss and take action on resolution number oh-one-two-seven-two-zero-one-five, this would be the. Uh, this resolution, skip it, this resolution, my, my bad. Appointing person to the city of Prairie Home Rule Charter Commission. Attorney, uh, Alexander, I want, uh, have a discussion, uh, kind of share with us what, uh, this is about and what the city of Hempstead did, cause last time we went through the Home Rule Charter, uh, we had a large, uh, committee. There's some recommendations coming from Olson and Olson on following the model that the city of Hempstead used. Now, so citizens will know that we tried this, what, two years ago?
Two thousand.
Two thousand and nine, forty-two, to, uh, adopt a, a city charter. Once you pass five thousand, you can have a city charter which gives, uh, the city more flexibility on city term limits or doing whatever the citizens would like in their city. It gives you a little more flexibility. Right now, we're a general law type A city, so there are certain rules that we have to follow in the general laws of Texas. So, this is a significant, uh, milestone for the city. And last time, I think what blocked it, and I could be off base, but it was, uh, the single-member districts who had looked at that, and the voting age, uh, was an issue. But attorney, y'all had some general recommendations or guidelines on how to proceed on this, cause if, if we're gonna do it, it's a lot of work between now and the time for the vote, so, I'm, that's why I'm stopping, to make sure everybody understands.
The concept of, of how the rule goes way back, even to the time that the Texas Constitution was first written in eighteen seventy-six. Uh, at that particular time, uh, cities that had a population of more than ten thousand had to get all of their authority to do things through the legislature. But what was happening at that time is that cities were growing so fast that when the legislature would meet every two years, the bulk of their agenda was taken up in approving, uh, uh, laws for the particular cities. So, in nineteen twelve, the people of the state of Texas voted to amend their constitution by allowing for home rule for all cities with a population in excess of five thousand. Uh, that, uh, provision has now been authorized in Article eleven, section five of the Texas Constitution. The idea of home rule actually stems from the concept that people can govern themselves better than somebody in Austin or somebody in Washington. And at the lower civil, at the lower city level, your elected officials are more familiar with more particular needs so that your elected city officials can better address those needs as opposed to the legislature, which can only meet every, every, uh, two years anyway. So, uh, chapter nine of the Local Government Code is what tells you what you can do in order to have a city charter to be a home rule city. As the mayor has said, home rule gives you the flexibility to determine your own, how you want to govern. It's like the constitution, it's the constitution for the city. It doesn't have to be too detailed, but what it does do is it sets forth what your rights are, what your obligations are, what you can and cannot do. So that you're no longer just looking to the state legislature for what your authorities are. You have much broader authorities where you can govern and you can put in place such laws that you feel are necessary as long as they do not conflict within your current statutes of state constitution. Uh, the first, uh, thing to do under chapter nine of the Local Government Code is to have a charter commission. And that commission will then make recommendations as to what provisions should be in the charter or what changes would be made to the current charter. What we have before you right now is a resolution that would appoint certain persons to that, uh, to that committee that will make the recommendation to city council, and then city council will then authorize an election so that all of you have the right to vote on whether or not you think the charter should be adopted. Once that charter is adopted, you become a home rule city, you then have much more flexibility to, to govern or have yourself governed in the way that you feel is best, and you have a lot more flexibility. I might also add that developers are generally a lot, looking at you a little bit more favorably if you're a home rule city, uh, than, than if you are not. Uh, the mayor had talked about the appointment of persons in the, uh, on the, on the charter commission. We handled, uh, uh, Hempstead, uh, and, and its transition from general law to a home rule city. And you're not, actually, the statutes do not state how many people have to be on the committee. Uh, it can be any particular number that you feel is best. Smaller groups tend to be a little bit better able to handle, and it's a little bit easier to get a consensus than if you have a large group. What we did when we were in Hempstead is each city council member appointed one person to the committee, and the mayor appointed one person to the committee. So, we had a six-person, uh, uh, charter commission. Uh, it was, it was a lot easier for them to get together and to make decisions, and they were able to quickly review the materials that were before them. They had hearings, all of the meetings are open to the public, uh, and then they presented their recommendations to, uh, uh, city council, and, uh, it was, uh, uh, it was, it was approved at, uh, at the following election. So, that, that, that was a good experience, I, I think Hempstead would, would let you know that, uh, they, they were able to move quickly forward. This, this would be a good, uh, time for, uh, us to move forward as well, as the mayor has said, and, uh, appoint the members of the commission and then see where we go from there.
And at these, uh, meetings that this, uh, commission will hold, uh, it's open to the public.
Yes, sir.
And the draft document, I think last time, we had to send it to every single person.
You, you do, the, the document has to be sent to every registered voter, uh, in the city, and of course, the technology now, I'm sure you also have it online and have hard copies available for people that wanna pick it up. But yes, it is sent to, to everybody.
And so, everybody gets a chance to, to give input, uh, to this commission, and then the commission synthesizes this and brings it forward to the city council for their input, and then it goes to the vote.
More or less, yes.
I'm just kind of rough. So, any questions of the attorney? Are we able to move forward, or what's your pleasure? And again, I think the, the sticking point last time was single-member districts, and I think cities like Hempstead opted not to go with single-member districts initially. And there's always an option later on, where you can design these districts and we got it.
Yeah, and, and that doesn't have to be, that doesn't have to be in your charter at this point, you know, you, we, we can fix a charter so that you continue to do and, and operate what you're doing right now, if you're satisfied with it. Uh, then, you know, the first, the first hurdle is to get the charter there, and then you can make changes in, in a way that you see fit. But the first, the first thing is, let's get the charter there, and then if there's some issues about districting, obviously, you can't, you know, federal law controls at what age you are able to vote, so there's nothing you can do about that. But, uh, uh, the, the, the sticking point is, let's get the charters first, and then we'll deal with some of the other issues.
So, when we start appointing this, the commission, you know, to name the county's owner?
Whenever you have names that you want to, to submit.
Name it tonight or tomorrow, or we can get them, uh, include it all to the resolution that this adopted.
Yes, sir.
And notify those people, and attorney will set that up.
But you should, you should have a copy of it.
We got, we got the draft resolution here tonight, uh, but if they don't have a name, maybe they wanna check with somebody, we can approve the resolution and add.
I don't have a copy.
No, we don't have a copy of the resolution. Now, it was a special resolution. Yeah, this is, uh, this is a resolution, this, uh, resolution of city of Prairie, uh, appointing persons to the city of Prairie Home Rule Charter Commission. And, uh, it just said, being resolved by the city council, city of Prairie, Texas, section one, that the following persons are appointed to our city of Prairie Home Rule Charter Commission, and then it's passed and approved, that's basically it.
Yeah, so it just has links there for the names of the, of the people that you wanna add?
Just include the names.
So, so we can pass the resolution and just have caveat that name, and then it's submitted by Monday?
You can do that, but then I'd like for you to bring it back to the city council so that everybody knows who's on the, you know, who's on the, uh.
So, if you got a name, you can add a name, or if you wanna talk to that person, I guess you need to add it.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I, I think that would probably be best, and then we bring it, we bring it forward at the next, uh, city council meeting.
How many people supposed to be on?
Well, I had recommended, uh, the same thing that Hempstead had done, where each city council member recommended one person, and in America, you have a six-person, uh, charter commission, and that worked well for Hempstead. So, I, that seems like the fair thing to do, is to have each person appoint one individual.
I think last time we had three, it was about eighteen people, and.
Yeah, that.
It's hard to get people together.
That's, that's not, that's not a requirement. It, it is in terms of certain circumstances, when you have a, uh, an election to appoint those persons to the committee, but you're not in that situation.
Can you talk about this, why is it?
Well, well, there, there are a lot of issues, uh, that are to our advantage to have a home rule versus general law. Uh, we have a lot of, uh, development approaching the home city, this gives us an opportunity to annex property.
Yes, you'll have a new.
Easier, um, it, it, it opens up the door for a, a wide range of opportunities for us. So, I, I think it's, it's, it's something that I think is interesting, that we seriously take a look at. And again, it's, it's a process, but we, we got some time constraints, trying to work up towards the May ninth election.
If you want this in May, then the, uh, commission needs to start working very quickly. And make sure that we have the, the, the hearing, there are some time limitations on when you need to forward, uh, uh, the document to the, uh, to the voters. I think it's something like forty, forty days, uh, anyway, it's, it's, we, we do have some time limitations.
You gotta get all that out, whenever we, the commission agreed to, they gotta send it to the community, they give it back, they hash through that. It's, it's a lot of work, but it's, it's well worth it, and I think it'll benefit future, uh, generations of, of the city, it's a good thing. What's your pleasure? Or you have any more questions for the attorney?
If we, if we approve this, uh, resolution, uh, could we get started before the next council meeting? Do we have to still wait for the next council meeting?
Well, the, the resolution doesn't really say anything unless it has those names in it, and so we don't have the, the names as yet. So, you know, can we go ahead and, so, I don't know, I guess maybe we could submit those names, and then we'll have a special meeting for these group of the residents?
We can do that.
Okay.
If y'all, if y'all wanna talk to folks first before you volunteer, we can talk for a special meeting to, to get a chance to ask them. Cause it's a lot of work, and then maybe people that stand in front that wanna volunteer.
Right. Mr. Mayor, I move that we take action on moving forward with resolution zero-one-two-seven-two-zero-one-five in appointing persons to the city of Prairie Home Rule Charter Commission.
Second.
The move the part of second, if we take action to move forward, uh, resolution oh-one-two-seven-two-zero-one-five.
Mr. Mayor, may I offer a summary of the matter? I would like to amend it by including the terms, uh, with city council and the mayor appointing one person each by February second. Yeah, we got submitted names by February second.
We accept the draft, can we amend it? Okay, the motion has been amended, uh, who second?
I did.
You, second?
I accept the second.
Uh, that we, uh, move forward, taking action on resolution oh-one-two-seven-two-zero-one-five, appointing person, one person each for, uh, mayor, city council, and the utility commission, uh, the name to be submitted by February the second for a special call meeting to accept a, uh, formal document. Heard the motion and the second, are you ready for a question?
Question.
I was a favoring kid by saying aye, aye, I was opposed. Item number twelve, discuss and take action on progress report of two entities that are reportedly considering legal action against National Department of Safety.
Okay, this, um, uh, agenda item, I place on you because I received some information that one of the entities was not working on it. However, I'm gratified to, um, to inform you that they are working on it. This is moving forward, so there's no action to be taken, but I do want the, the, the citizens to know that this has been going on since city hall was built. So, we are, we are taking, things are happening, it is moving forward, so no action is needed.
And there is, uh, there is an investigator that's been assigned to this, and, uh, those who like to know his name, gonna give him information like this, you're free to, free to do.
And I have the information.
Okay, alright. Item number thirteen, discuss and take action on continuing monthly payments, donation of seven fifty dollars to the volunteer fire department to documentation presented automatically as monthly account payment, loading monthly emergency services district payments of six thousand dollars to the fire department, and one time fifty-nine thousand dollars to the Prairie Dr. Fire Department, following track.
This too is my agenda item. Uh, in nineteen eighty-nine, I believe it was, the volunteer fire department building was financed in the amount of one hundred six thousand two hundred dollars. It's a, a, a metal building that was financed back in nineteen eighty-nine for one hundred six thousand two hundred dollars now. I asked at the November meeting for clarification as to our actually donating those funds to the fire department, which I have no problem with it, we have documentation. The mayor read all kinds of documents, but there was no documentation, in spite of what Mr. Roberts put in his paper. There was no documentation that stated why or how the seven fifty was to be, um, donated monthly to the fire department. The fire department does receive approximately six thousand dollars a month from Emergency Services District, which is E S D. You citizens pay into E S D through your property taxes. So, we are making contributions to the fire department, uh, with that. You citizens pay into E S D through your property taxes, so we are making contributions to the fire department, uh, with that, uh, the fifty nine thousand dollars from the Tri-County Fire and the city mayor in the credit union. So I have no problem with donating the, the fire department, but we are to be good stewards of the citizens' money. We can't just put something on a budget and approve it every year if we don't have any documentation that justifies. So I've asked for documentation, I put in public information request, as I said earlier, I was told it was destroyed in a flood. If it was destroyed in a flood, at this point, I am recommending that if this is what the council and the citizens want, that we do recreate that documentation. Now, I know it was said, excuse me, I know it was said that that seven fifty a month is a paltry amount, which it is, considering the fact that these young men and women, some older ones, put their lives on the line to protect us, you know, whenever there's an emergency. Now, for twenty-eight years, well, this is nine thousand a month, for twenty-eight years, that would be two hundred fifty thousand, fifty-two thousand dollars we have donated. If it's twenty years, it's a hundred eighty thousand we have donated, fifteen years, it's a hundred thirty-five thousand we have donated. And I don't know that the citizen can, that the city can authorize those kinds of donations without documentation. That's all I'm saying, I'm just asking for documentation, which I haven't got.
Let me, let me add that, so to be clear, the seven hundred fifty started under the administration and it continues. It continued every year of his administration, it continued every administration after that and it continued up through this budget period. That money goes in separate accounts and, and the six thousand dollars is not there, that's not the budget for the fire department, it's four thousand, it's not six thousand. Uh, and the money that was awarded to the fire department from FEMA is restricted funds and it's there to make expansions to the station. And that's what that money has been here marked up by the board of the fire department. It's to expand the station because it's out of room, it's too small, we got a paddle roof to fix, uh, restrooms in the station, that's where that money is going. That money's been earmarked already, so in, in the E S D budget, those are line item appropriations. They go for fuel, they go for other things that are in a line item, those that are not expended in that line item, E S D asks us for us to return those funds. So those, those are budgeted line items, it's not like you're getting all this money, you get an allocation each month, it's not six thousand, you gotta leave that for the stuff for it. Yeah, four thousand each month, but it's a line item appropriation, that's what that is, that's what the fire department's been operating on. When we started this, this fire department, we did not have any appropriation, so the city stepped up and I mean, every year, now, Mr. Johnson, you correct me, how long have we been doing?
Okay, uh, I started in ninety-four, the city was contributing seven hundred fifty dollars in nineteen ninety-four. And the history of it, I don't know about some of these other things that y'all have been referencing, but since nineteen ninety-four, what we have done is the city in the budget process has agreed to donate to the fire department for whatever use, if, if deemed necessary. We've never asked for a financial from the fire department in all these years because the donation was given to the fire department, it's been seven fifty, I know since nineteen ninety-four. Also, in this period, there at one time was a volunteer ambulance service, we contributed to the volunteer ambulance service. Another time, there was a bus service, we, we contributed to the bus service. It was an effort by the city to give a small contribution to the independent operators who provide services to the citizens of the city of Purview. And that's what, and, and again, the money that's going to the volunteer fire department, it is a donation to the fire department approved each time you do a budget. That line item is there, it's been on every budget since nineteen ninety-two, it has not decreased, it has not increased. And again, it has nothing to do with what they do with the money. You simply, you simply approve a donation to that organization for them to do what they like, what, what they decide to do with it. Now, you can ask for an accounting of their financials just to see how they're operating and maybe just, I don't know, if that's what, what you ask, what you wanna ask for.
I asked for documentation that we can make this donation, that's all I asked for.
Then you could, you, I would, I would suggest that you ask for an accounting of their financials.
That could be in order too, but I mean, just to put something on a budget every year and say we're gonna donate taxpayers' dollars, we need some documentation where this was approved by somebody somewhere.
This, Mr. Mayor, part of this information is, is information that is, you know, one, I, I, I find it very interesting that that councilwoman who served on the board of the fire department for plus years, after September now has issues with everything in the fire department and wants to pick apart the fire department, now she wants to know all this information. I think that it's very unfair for her to put the, the lives and safety of the citizens of this community because you got an issue with the seven fifty and you've been seeing it since you've been on council for the last eight, ten years. But you got an issue now.
Well, councilwoman, I found it interesting, I'm the only one that asked, I'm the only one that'll speak up and ask, I found that interesting.
Yeah, but, but for us to even continue to go into this, this is one of the things that was listed to an issue and now you're trying to request all this information, I, I.
I mean, we were, I have asked all along since I have been on this council, whatever we do to keep it transparent, all I'm asking for is documentation, what is the big carry deal about asking for documentation?
If I could point out, I do recall your open records request, Ms. Harden, but the doc, the documentation isn't there, it was destroyed. So if you want documentation of something that happened several years ago and it's, it's not there, then we are unable to provide it for you.
So if, if it's not there, there's no documentation, we just use taxpayers' dollars to make donations to whoever, I need a couple donations myself, make them available.
I can't keep being getting them.
Well, I know you may.
The citizens want to know, they, they wanna know about the seven fifty, so either that the documentation can be recreated so we have something on the books.
Well, I, I don't know what the documentation was because it's destroyed, so I don't know how to recreate something that I don't know what it is.
The city council, each, you know, you're here.
One of our pretty donations.
And the city council has been.
About three donations.
As far as the. And if you wanna be informed, we are looking around, attorney, for our, for our agreement between the city and the fire department, if the city wants to continue to contribute to the fire department. If the city chooses not to contribute to the fire department, then they can both not contribute to the fire department. Uh, and it's not gonna stop the fire department, we have not tried not to be transparent. And Ms. Harden served on the board of the fire department as well as Mr. Brown, they both served, this is the only time this issue's coming up, after September. This is not, nothing that the, a big sticking point that the citizens may feel bad for, you only have it after September.
That's not true, I was asked, I was asked by Mayor Leffler, I was asked by him several years ago and I asked you and I never got an answer.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna say this, I don't, I don't think there's anybody in the city that doesn't wanna support the fire department. I think everybody wants to see the fire department do well, cause if your house catches on fire, you're gonna want somebody there to put it out or, or you know, lose everything, so. All I'm asking is, is there any way we can maybe draft an agreement, draft something, so when somebody asks, hey, where's the seven, what is this seven fifty, where's it going for, what is it doing? We can, we can pull it out and we can present it.
That's right.
At the end of the day.
That's right.
And, and it was said at the November meeting, we understand, we know where it's going, it's supposedly going to pay the, uh, the note on the fire department. And I said that the city filled out the paperwork for the, the law of the fire department. Did the city fill out the paperwork?
No, the association filled out the paperwork, we got a letter from the mayor saying that they were gonna make that initial payment and it's been made since. Then we can pull it, USDA version, we're all going with USDA.
So this is the donation, it's not the, the donation.
It's a donation, that's what it is, a donation.
Right, Mr. Mayor.
Aye.
Um, do we need a formal motion, is that something that, uh, you just directly need to do?
If you want to just direct me to do it and then you can either act on it or not act on it once I submit it to you.
You can draft it and something you can approve at the next meeting?
Yes, yes, I will work towards that, yeah.
Will this, will this be counterproductive to something that we have to address in executive session?
I, I.
Because if we pass something.
Well, well, you had already asked me to, to prepare something and I'll, and I'll do my best to do that and then, once I prepare something, then we can decide whether or not you wanna pass it or not pass it, but it, it is something that we can discuss and then you can use that discussion to guide you on what you do with regards to the document.
So you, you take that as an action item?
I, I'll just take it as an instruction to meet and then you can take form of action on it once it's finished.
Well, I, uh, just clarification is needed because at the November meeting, you stated, I have a copy of the document where the City of Purview filed an application with USDA rule development to build a fire station. So it was just clarification was needed, that's all I'm asking, and to sit up here as a council member representing at large and, and it's a problem when I ask a question or I ask for clarification, that's a problem.
It wasn't a problem, there was a problem if that, if your, if your agenda item would've said that, your agenda item doesn't say that, your agenda item put out a whole bunch of non-truthy, false information.
I don't think that, I don't think that's the case.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, this discussion is getting off. What's your pleasure, Miss Allen, we direct it to attorney or?
Do we continue making the seven fifty payments with donations without, um, any kind of documentation? And that's what I need to do.
I move that we table item thirteen.
We moved out of section and table item number thirteen. See the motion is secondly ready for the court. First, all the favor in case I say an I. Item number oh, as item number fourteen, discuss the takeout. Per open meetings and regard asylum vote taken by planning zone. To rezoning property, item number one, one, two, five, two, zero, one, four, eight. From agricultural residential to Joe Marshall, five point two, nine three acres, books out of Memphis, you have A, four, five, two, six, zero, nine, two ninety, fifty, fifty-four, text.
Okay, that too is my agenda item. I attended this, uh, planning and zoning meeting where after the discussion of the rezoning, a piece of paper, I think I saw Mr. Brown's right there. After discussion of the, uh, of the, uh, request to rezone, paper was passed around for all the members to write down their vote. One, uh, citizen asked, well, what was the vote? They said, well, we're not gonna tell you. Now, this is at an open meeting. We're not gonna tell you, we'll announce it in council meeting. Well, I checked with the, uh, Texas Attorney General. He said that was an illegal vote. You may not have a close vote at an open meeting. And here is the Attorney General's ruling on that, that will have to be redone.
Can I, can I address the council? Okay, thank you. I don't recall what you did after you-
But I was saying-
We, uh, we get called for an meeting. Uh, we asked by the Bureau of Council to hold all of the individuals only committee. These are citizens, upright citizens that represent this committee. And they shouldn't be, uh, put through this kind of thing. Now, every one of them stated that they voiced their vote. And, of course, after we voted and we closed the meeting, the individual asked a question. Once we have closed the meeting, we don't answer any questions, we give the report to the council. Okay, and the other thing that I, uh, has been pointed out and that is, we tried to get the engineer out here and I understand he was here today and I took a good chance to talk to him before he got to the building. That this building cannot go where it's located on the site because of this drainage ditch that's going across two ninety. Kept saying that. There will be no flooding because there's a retention point in the back that they have put in on the site and they said that tonight that they were doing. Now, what I suggest, easy way, an easy way to resolve this is to recoup the meeting. You recoup these meetings, we recoup this. Even if I bring home a ticket, we can do that. But the citizens are not gonna be used as pawns in our big game, this is serious business to us and some of us have been serving the city for years and we just feel like this is a slap in the face, somebody trying to help do something. Now, when this building is moved, it's more than a half, almost a half a football field away from this intersection. All the traffic is gonna be down on this end and come out on two ninety. It won't interfere with Richard's road in any way, a very little impact. And at the same time, light from this would be down on this end and not interfere with this end. Thank you for your time.
Okay, um, no, no, no question, I'm just gonna make a comment. This was by no means a slap in the face to anyone. If you drive through, if you drive through lift stations, you drive through wall and you see the progress. Only progress is being made in Prairie is that if we uproot our senior citizens, move them to another neighborhood, we can progress. Only progress like Mr. Allen stated. We aren't getting new businesses, we're getting old businesses back in there. So, we need to do it right and that is all I'm doing.
We're not making progress because we're fighting each other, we need to stop fighting each other and joining together and try to do something, stop criticizing each other.
But if we would follow the ordinances and the rules, we wouldn't have that problem.
Right, if you can't make up the rules as you go.
That's right, and that's what's being done.
Let's, uh, let's, attorney, do you have a, input or you have a question as well?
The only thing that I would say is that you give some-
I mean, this over, reading that this, this thing that Councilman Hunter passed out is indicating elected officials for a board, does that imply, cause-
Well, I haven't, I haven't seen that and that's one of the things that I wanted to, to bring up is that in this particular situation, let's look at what the Planning and Zoning Commission does. It is, it's advisory. You have a hearing, you prepare a report and you give that report to city council. There's nothing in the statutes or in the ordinance that says how you make your decision for that report. Once you send that report to city council, city council can either accept it or reject it because city council will then have a public hearing and will make its own independent quote on whether or not to change that ordinance. So, let's, let's look back at what the Planning and Zoning Commission does and even your own ordinances allow the Planning and Zoning Commission to, uh, uh, make its own, uh, operations. Uh, so, it, so, so was their vote, and they said they had a vote. Was their vote a violation of the process? I don't think so. I, 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 I don't think that there was a violation of the process because you know there was a vote. You know how they voted, they indicated on this piece of paper how they voted. And I remember the chairman announced that it was a unanimous vote. Everybody voted in favor of changing that, that zoning classification. So, I don't feel that, I do not see a violation of the process.
Okay, that announcement was made at city council meeting.
This, this documentation, this documentation speaks to what you said, doesn't speak to planning and zoning, this speaks to an elected body, which again, cannot have, um, a secret ballot, so, again, um, I move that we-
Even so with the Attorney General's, uh, he said when I talked with him, he said you may not take a written vote and not tell the people in attendance what the outcome was, it was said, we'll tell you at city council meeting and that's when it was told. I think there are people that were here that were, that were at that meeting.
I, I'm the one asked the question. And, and I was not told to answer.
Because the meeting was over and we don't answer any questions.
I asked you right after that.
The conversation is up here, council, so.
Once again, we want to make sure we're doing everything correctly and by the process. Your legal opinion, how do we rectify the situation to make sure that the process we've done?
Well-
Cause we don't want to get down the road and-
Right, and, and I don't think anything was done incorrectly, I mean, your own ordinances allow the PNC committee to set their own operations and the chairman can operate it the way he feels is best. You, you are not an elected body, all you do is submit a report. So, it was not done right, it may have been done differently. But that doesn't mean that it was wrong because there's nothing in the ordinances or in the, the statutes that, that dictates that, that action for the PNC committee.
Was, was this vote conducted any differently than, than any other votes that Donald done?
We always do it the same way, we say, are you ready to vote? And each person will vote, will voice their opinion and he will voice their vote. And that's the way it was done and that's the way it's been done. That's ten or twelve years. It's not a round of news of order kind of thing where you take the motion, it's like a jury.
I move that we, uh, I don't even know to request, I move that we table, we table, uh, the, the-
There's no action. There's no action. Would you bring it up, sir?
I have the right to bring it up. Come and get it, officer.
Oh, you, oh, you, oh, you thought, there's, there's, if there's no action, there's no action, we need, we got a long matter here. And then actually now we could take- All right, uh, we, we got, um, the second session, we got the partners here. Uh, let's go through and have our reports so that our people at the here can hear you for four. All right, hold on, let's have order, the conversations, you can take those outside. Uh, Mr. Johnson?
Good evening to the city council, uh, to the mayor, city council members. Uh, citizens of the city of Prairie View. Department heads and bringing the food, uh, just visiting. Uh, third month during this fiscal period, fourteen, fifteen. And I'm gonna ask you to turn to page one of your financials. Uh, on page one, uh, to date, revenue side, we've taken eight hundred and thirty-three thousand versus a budget of six hundred and sixty-seven thousand, which is a favorable variance of a hundred and sixty-six thousand. And, uh, this is primarily due to the, uh, uh, early, uh, paying of a profit tax and that's gonna level out as we, we go through the year. If we look at, uh, the expenses, you see the expenses to date is, right in Bill's column, four hundred and fifty-six thousand versus a budget of six hundred and fifty. So, that's a favorable variance there of a hundred and ninety-three thousand. And that's overall favorable variance of five hundred and thirty-five at this time. And, and that's what we expect at this time of the year. To go to page three. Page three gives you what your cash position is, uh, at the end of December. We currently have total cash of two million four thirty-eight. The, the primary, I mean, the, the major amount is the general obligation bond, a million oh forty-five seventy-six. And you all, uh, have approved a, uh, project, and let me ju- just interject here for the citizens that both, that general obligation bond can only be used for water and sewer. It can't be used for anything else. That's, and, and, and that's by, by, by the nature of the bond the way it was passed. That's why we had to, it's very important that we got in the, uh, minutes that the, uh, the extension that, that was approved tonight would be funded through this bond. Uh, we have to identify and we keep the records about all the money, all the bonds are spent. If you notice, there was a bond that we had earlier. The other phase of this bond that, 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 uh, the city approved was the, uh, street improvements. That was a million dollars and that, and that three dollars was spent a hundred percent for street improvements here in the city of Prairie. You all saw that improvement that took place, you had a lot of streets that were unfazed, all those streets got paved. We couldn't pave it as wide as we wanted to, but we could only, we only had a million and we spent a million. And, and so, the engineer, when he, when he, uh, went through and, and did his surveys and what have you, he, 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 he looked at all the streets and we tried to pave all the streets in the city of Prairie View and, and I think we accomplished that goal. So, it's very important that, that, uh, we, we maintain, uh, our transparency as far as how we, uh, disperse these funds here. If you go over now to page, page seven, under the general, under the general fund, I talked about the variances here, under general fund, we have a favorable revenue variance of sixty-nine thousand. We've taken in three hundred and sixty-three thousand versus two hundred and ninety-four thousand. Again, uh, a major portion of that is the early collection of property taxes. And also in the area of sales tax, we have a favorable variance as far as sales taxes go for this first three-month period. Under expenditures, uh, we have a favorable variance of forty-four thousand dollars. And, and that's good in general fund because your expenditures pretty much, uh, they're, they're not that seasonal, that, which is seasonal under the general fund is basically weed cutting. And that's gonna pick up as we get further into, into the warm season. We have a strategy in place this year and we've talked about that, we haven't moved there yet. And that is the, uh, uh, strategy of purchasing our own factory more. But, we need to wait on that until we have made some decisions in the utility part as far as the operators go. And we haven't gotten to that yet, so, uh, we'll, we'll address that as we go forward because we still haven't hired a permanent utility person yet and that, that's gonna take place sometime soon. I think you have a bid out, you have a, uh, what do you call it? You have advertised for a person. And again, that's important that we have that person in place and they can operate, uh, the equipment. In other words, it, it don't make sense to buy equipment, don't have market. So, we're, we're waiting on, on that to take place and, uh, we'll move forward from that standpoint. Uh, and again, that, that equipment will serve more than just one purpose. Because you, you have a lot of lots, we, we address as far as cleaning lots and what have you. And without equipment now, we have to go to outside contractors. But if we have our own equipment and we using our own personnel, then we can keep that personnel busy. Uh, we, we clean more lots, in other words, because the equipment we wanna buy, we will have the bucket on it, uh, whereas that, it can do a lot of, uh, cleaning as far as lots and, and that'll, that'll enhance the lot cleaning as we go forward. Uh, if we go over now to public works on page ten, we'll see we do have a favorable variance in public works as far as revenue goes, four hundred and six thousand, which is good because again, that's, that, that's pretty even skilled throughout the year. For the first three months, we do have a favorable variance on the revenue side. And the, uh, expenditure side is favorable at, at thirty-nine thousand. Uh, but, uh, again, that, that could change any month, uh, it just takes one, one major overflow. And what you all approved tonight, uh, that extension there should help alleviate some of the problems that we have had at, at, uh, what's that lift station called? Which one?
Koherts.
Koherts, Koherts, okay. Hopefully we won't have, uh, the problems that we've had in the past which, uh, created, uh, large expenditures that we had to address on a monthly basis, so that should help us from that standpoint. So, again, through the first three months, if those are the two major, uh, cost areas that we have in the city. And that's why I addressed those two, but for the first three months here, we're, we're doing okay. But again, that's just the first three months and we have to, we, hopefully, we can move forward through the next nine months. And again, I will be working with you all because we have some strategies in place that we get discussed during the budget as far as possibly purchasing other equipment. And, and we have to look at how operations is going, how we're staffed. As, that will impact the decision that we make as far as purchasing equipment as we go forward. Because we, the equipment that we, again, I mentioned, is all in the public works area. We've already done that. Uh, the only thing that we haven't done is we, we, we've got the, uh, the, uh, the route, I mean, the, the service and, and what have you. The, what, what we haven't done yet is the, uh, police cars. And I'm, I'm working with Chief Johnson as far as, uh, the type of police cars, we all, we all root in that state. But we want to staff the police department, which I think is going to hire one officer. And, and, and so, you, you wanted to, you want, we wanted to see staffing before we just invest in additional police cars. So, once we get our staffing situation taken care of and decided upon, then we move forward as far as the police cars. But yes, that will be taken care of and what we're doing now is looking at the type of vehicle that we might want to purchase for the park. And Johnson and I have been working together on that. What I'm doing is coming up with costs and, and what he's doing is, uh, saying, you know, that particular vehicle will, will serve as his need.
I'm present to Mr. Johnson. Thank you, sir. The minister of the Public Works, Mr. Jones?
Good evening. Hello, Mr. Tuleka, for the, for the audience that may not know Ms. Alexander, the council has approved Ms. Alexander to take on acting. When I walk out at midnight, she walks in tomorrow as the interim city secretary under third time council appoints a, a permanent secretary. She's already on board in the court, so she'll be carrying several hats, but I ask you to support her work. This transition is made and, uh, I'm sure you will, thank you. Uh, there are three advertisements out in the paper now, one for a city secretary. Uh, and since I'm on the way out, let me, I'm just gonna say something. We cannot continue to say what we cannot afford to do. We better start looking at what we need, what we need to do. I'm gonna step on a line here with the city secretary, if I may. Walla is hiring eight. Walla's advertisement is a, for a certified city secretary. Those ranges of that, if you look in TML and you look at what Hempstead have, those city secretaries, of what they do, are ranging sixty-five to seventy-five thousand a year. I'm not saying that's where you are now, I'm saying this is what you need to look at going forward. So, I just, also, we have an operator, we have an operator position for public works that's being advertised. I have a potential candidate for council to consider. That operator has to be at least a double C operator, that's a TCEQ class C water and a class C wastewater. You have to have that position if you're gonna manage your own public works. Look at TCEQ, look at TML and see what those guys are putting out. Seven Trim has double Cs on their plan, eighty thousand dollars a year. So, when you say you don't have the dollars, I live here in Prairie View, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be here for the rest of my life. I'm concerned about what happens here. So, when that mentality, if we don't have the money, we better get out of there. Because our neighbors are moving in on us, I was talking about another incident, and it's another situation that's coming up in the near future. Uh, we also patrol officers, I'm a resident of the city of Prairie View, I'm concerned about patrol officers out there by themselves in the middle of this city. So, whatever council can do, I encourage it, I know the limitations and I'm not talking for council, but I need, we need to keep that in mind too. So, those are three positions. Uh, city secretary, we currently have it running in the local paper, Ms. Alexander will put it in TML, uh, next week. Uh, a field operator, certified field operator supervised for public works and a, and, and patrol officer, there's multiple patrol officer position. Okay, in the public works area, we had two lift stations, pumps went down on two of the lift stations during all this bad rain last month. Mr. Johnson was saying, we can't predict when something's gonna break in public works. High Point lost the pump, uh, Richard Road lost the pump, so we have, it's, it's a, it's a dual system, so we kept the system online with one pump. The, the, the new wastewater plant lost the wiring and boost of fuses out there, that's, that's been repaired as we speak. So, in public works, even though things are running smooth, what's happening now could change in the next twenty-four hours, so we have to keep that in mind. Death audit in public works, we had a preliminary death audit, we are finishing up the twenty-twelve grant. Uh, our grant writer was out today, uh, with public management, we went over all our paperwork. TC, TDA will be doing a death audit on Friday. We see, we anticipate no problems with that, that is closing out that grant. Since I've been here, we've had five grants, we've all, they've all passed it, uh, real, off the real development and TDA's final audits. That allows you to be able to apply in two years for another grant. So, in twenty sixteen, the city will be able to apply for another water wastewater grant to continue to improve the system and make available for, for development. The RFP that council approves tonight will not eliminate all your problems, it just helps with the situation. It helps relieve some of the load off of the current. But anyway, good night to you. And I appreciate everybody here for the support you've given me. I, I grant you, I'm an operation guy, I come out of corporate America with thirty-six years of building chemical plants around the world. Some of this was new to me, not running an infrastructure, but municipal management, so, but I, I, I thank the council for your support. I'm, I'm sure I made some mistakes, but I, I just encourage you, whoever steps into this, continue to support. They will make mistakes, it's, I mean, it's just the nature of the beast, it's called continuing to improve, so, I, I just ask you to support them. Uh, we are making the last payment now, we're processing the last payment, W W Payton on the grant, the twenty-twelve grant, for one hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. T, TDA has approved that they put the money in the bank, we immediately paid the DC, that, that money, it was kind of, it was a mistake too, so, we are proud of that. Uh, the auditor, uh, the council approved to do the external audit is on site now. He is, he is combing through all of the city's books to make sure that everything is in order, he will-
Some, some jobs, jobs doing me in there, committing to the job. Uh, Ethan doing us a yonest job up here. He's, he's a twenty, he's a twenty-four seven person and a lot of his work goes unseen, but it's certainly appreciated, he works hard. Uh, he's out there on those lift stations when, when they call, when the bell goes off, Mr. Jones is out there. Uh, he watches our dollars, he gets into it with JJ quite a bit about the dollars. Uh, he's been a, a lister of the public funds and he's one of the ones that have guided us through this whole transition from outsourcing to pulling it back in-house where we can control it. Uh, and he, he's been, he's been a, a good public servant to the citizens approved. Mr. Jones, we, we just want to let you know, we really appreciate, uh, your hard work and the sacrifice you made, uh, to come here with the city. Now, just so, uh, we wanna put your business in the street now, you just talked about you and your, your first lady, y'all planning on going somewhere, put it so, huh?
In two months, we're headed to Maui. Yeah, what you don't know yet, I'll just share with the citizens, my wife don't know. We're headed from Maui, I had some freaking flyers, I, in my corporate American days, I flew one point two million miles, so I had some freaking, so I'm taking home to Tokyo and to Hong Kong.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you.
All right, uh, do you have a copy of the delinquent tax report, you, uh, in your folder? Uh, the municipal court, if you have that, Chief Johnson?
I'm in Kansas City, do you have the copy of the report if there are any questions regarding our report?
Any questions for Chief?
We, we, we're moving forward with, uh, we are current with the UCR reporting. And, uh, so, they, they'll find that file data will be, uh, submitted to the state, so we're, we're making great progress with that.
They explain with the UCR report?
It's a UFR crime report, basically we record, we report our major crimes. Uh, and that allows us to, to, after we do this over a couple of years, it will allow to compare our crime rate clearance rate with others in similar cities. Uh, and it also allows us access to their data, so if they are an official- And it also allows us access to their data, so they're beneficial. It would also put us in a position where we'd be able to apply for some of the federal grants by participating in the U C R program. So it will put us in line to do that. So we're working diligently to make sure we're getting that data in, so we'll be eligible for those crimes. We're moving forward with the new reporting system. We've got a little bit more to go. We've had several conference calls with the competitive edge software which is invented. There's some things we have to do on our end, so I have to do a conference call and we log on on the system. And there are some things we have to customize for us. And so we've been working diligently with that. Holidays, holidays kind of slowed that down a little bit, but we're on track with that. And so we've got a lot of things going on. Our new recruit is working out very well. Chief, I think she's gonna do very well for us. We were doing well. One of the applicants that you got approved decided not to come. I don't know if you're aware of it, the gentleman, Mr. Brown, he decided not to come. There were some issues with being able to move here and those sorts of things. So we're, we're moving forward. We will, the advocate, Mr. Jones said that topic is in the paper now. We've gotten it properly through. I think resumes that have been sent and so forth. And so we're moving forward with that.
Thank you, Chief.
Now, I'm really glad to see wingaritas, you know, coming to the neighborhood. But, but please use those decimal meters when you go by there.
Yes, ma'am. We have them ordered, they have not arrived yet.
Oh, I thought they were here.
I don't know what's taking them so long, but they are ordered.
Okay, well, when you get them, please use them.
We'll use them. I got a feeling wingarita won't be long before they're ready. Yeah, we will.
Thank you. You got a copy of the tax report? Now, this is, there are two reports in there. You got one up here that says the delinquent report is number C. That's from a delinquent tax return. And then the tax one that's here now is the one coming from Steve. Should be two, you should have two tax reports. One delinquent and one is, yeah. Yeah, you have the school taxes, let's see, the other one is chief. You know, it's in the package. This one is, this one is the one from.
The school board.
School board. Now, you should have another one say delinquent tax. That should be, you got a copy of the court. No, no, the delinquent tax report.
Oh, that's the second one from.
Yeah, yeah, it should be in that package. Y'all need to get that, we'll get you that. All right, we got executive session. I want to give a council member a chance, 'cause once we go into executive session, we might be there for a minute. So I just thought, on the end with council members, we'll just kind of do council member reports and then. Most of y'all already tapped them up and handed them out, so we can go on to the executive session. Let's start with the council member.
Good evening, citizens. Thank you for allowing me to serve. Thank you, Mr. Jones, for your continued service for the citizens of Prairie View for the last six years that I've worked with you. You've helped us keep us on track. So sad, once again, thank you. Thanks, citizens, for citizens who came out to participate in my brothers' keepers program. Again, the information I presented is a small step on how we continue to move our community forward to support those two efforts. So please come out, Ms. Alexander. Thank you for stepping up and taking the challenge in this interim. Because we're gonna need someone to help us continue to move forward as we've been doing. I want to say to my council members and colleagues, we may not agree on everything, but I think and hope that everyone has the best interest of the city of Prairie View at heart. We continue to move forward as one collective unit to grow this community, to be the community we want to see. Citizens, thank you for pushing back at us. But hopefully you, you will realize that the decisions you make to elect us is important. And the people you elect are important. And so please remember this on May ninth. And we'll see who'll be back up here again. Thank you for allowing me to serve.
Good afternoon, good evening. The biggest thing that I want to talk about is I'm a part of an organization called the Black Network. The Black Network Direct. And what that is, it's a bunch of young black entrepreneurs from around the country. And what we've done is we've put our heads together, we, we're working on a project called The Washington Nap. And what it is, it's a recreation of the old Black Wall Street. And what we've done, we've had over a hundred acres donated to us in Monroe, Louisiana. And what we're gonna do is we're putting together a shopping, a shopping center that promotes black owned businesses to teach our people financial literacy. And we're launching our project starting on February first. What we're doing is our goal is to, because we already have some, some people who are willing to donate. But we want them to take us seriously, so we're trying to raise a million dollars for our project. We have a website, thewatchtonap.com. And, you know, we have, we're selling shirts. We have shirts we sell that are, you know, we have Malcolm X, we have M L K, we have J. Cole. And they're all inspirational quotes. But what we're doing is, our goal is to have one in every major city. And me being from Prairie View, I think Prairie View is a major city. And I think we need one here, but we have to start somewhere. And since we didn't have to pay for land in Monroe, Louisiana, that's where we're gonna start. And we're gonna have everything from museums that teach our history, you know, black history. It's gonna be barber shops, you know, lawyers, you know, everything from top to bottom, just to give us that opportunity. Like if you know about the Black Wall Street that was in Oklahoma that was burned down, you know, they were able to function by themselves and they were financially literate and they, they were very successful. So we're trying to take that worldwide, we're trying to give ourselves a leg up again. And I'll be presenting some information later on in the month. And I would, you know, definitely love all of y'all's support as we try to make this dream a reality.
Councilmember.
My, my report has been passed down. If you did not get a copy, let me know and I'll make sure you come over here.
Councilmember.
Good evening, Mr. Members of the council. Good evening, friends and neighbors. First of all, I'd like to wish everybody a happy new year. Secondly, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Jones and his retirement from the city. It must be nice to be traveling and have so many frequent flying miles. I don't have that many, but I'll be working in it. I won't tell my wife what you're doing for your wife, because you have set the bar very high. But I'll get back at you. Mrs. Alexander, welcome aboard. Look forward to working with you. I'd like to compliment Sergeant Garrett on his award. It was a well-earned award and wish all the members of the city employees to continue working on it. I must tip my hat to Dr. Sharp. If you haven't seen the quarterly newsletter that she's putting together, you may want to contact her and get a copy. It's a lot of good information and she's trying to bring the whole community together. So let's get behind the newsletter and work with her. On Thursday evening, I believe she has a meeting coming up in reference to the National Night Out Program. So she's gonna be asking all the subdivision of all the neighborhoods to come back again so we can stop planning, so we can have a lot of fun. And this time I'll ride around to just about all the neighborhoods again. And I'll sit down and I'll break bread and eat whatever you have to offer from you. So I'll be doing that. I don't know if anybody received it in the mail, but the Waller County, Waller County has been sent out a package in reference to exemptions on homestead. And when I agreed on that particular package, I looked down and I was comparing where Prairie View is in relationship with all the cities in Waller County. And I'm gonna ask the council to kind of take a look at that because we're a little bit out of, out of step with what our neighbors are doing. And I think if we can give our help to some of our senior citizens in the community, I think we'd be really good. Three thousand dollars is good, the city is doing, but I wish we can do a little more, especially for individuals over sixty-five. Ladies and gentlemen, we like to see businesses survive here in the city of Prairie View. And that can be done simply if we in this room here decide to patronize our businesses. If you haven't had a chance to go to Wingarita, come and check it out. They're having a good time, the food is good, the margaritas are great. And the company down there is just as good. We have a community that is reinvesting in our neighborhoods. We have a beauty shop open up down there by P V Grocery. That is open as well, let's patronize them. We have another business generator open up across the railroad track with Mrs. Daniels. Let's patronize them. But if you like to see businesses survive in the city of Prairie View, we got a spot with us here in the city of Prairie View. Come out and patronize them. Go to Anco and spend your dollars in Prairie View. Go to P V Grocery and spend your dollars in Prairie View. If you like bowling, they're about to open up the bowling alley in a couple of months. Go to Bowing Alley and spend your money here in Prairie View. Let your money circulate and let your money kind of help our city grow. Prairie is a good place and it can become a greater place if we all go do a part in this country, be to what our city got to do. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm having a good time in the city of Prairie View. I have news for everybody. My name will not be on the ballot in May, but it'll be in the ballot very shortly. With that, a good night.
First of all, Mr. Jones, I want to take congratulations and I hope I can see you on YouTube.
Get some Snapchats.
On February the second at six P M here at City Hall, Commissioner Barnett is gonna be hosting a town hall meeting. And on February the fourth at six P M in Long Island Annex, he's gonna host another town hall.
What time?
Six P M. On the second, February the second and February the fourth.
We call for a meeting on the second, especially we should be short, submit those ninety minutes. We can, we should be out here before. His is at seven, right? Six, we need him by, be out here by the time we start gathering. People just stay for that. Is it in Mr. Barnett? Okay, mayor's report, I have, my report is written. Please take a look at it. Just want to remind you that I tried to include in that report some of the goals and objectives that we've outlined to get done. To include water wastewater system improvements, strengthen the citizen services, provide for the continuing education needs of our citizens, innovative economic development initiatives, meet our transportation needs and the recreation needs of our citizens in Paramount. And then also include some updates on some of the actions that I just mentioned. So please take a look at that. We open for discussion and we'll be trying to update this each month. So with that, we got an item that we have to finish up here on item number seven. Approval of minutes from December sixteen, twenty fourteen, what's your pleasure? She gave a little tug. What's your pleasure?
I think on page two, that motion, I'm trying to see, was it tabled or is that just? The communities that care?
It was revised.
Right, what I'm saying, in the minutes, it says tabled.
We need to correct, we need to determine the language she's done it. And you got the copy, proof for them to sign the name?
Yeah, it can be signed if you like.
You got it here?
After the exact sentence, I could pass it around.
Yeah, you took out the language that you.
That's, that's correct, but I'm saying on page two, the first sentence, it says motion to table. And we need to change that in case someone wants to challenge what we voted on.
So what should it be?
Has she motion passed?
Correction. And the suit of terms. Thank you.
I'll pick that.
What's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I move, I move that the minutes from the December sixteen, twenty fourteen meeting be approved without necessary corrections.
The move number seven, approve the minutes from the December sixteen, twenty fourteen meeting with the necessary corrections. Heard the motion, I second, I read for. All the favor came by saying aye. Those opposed, as have. Now, we're in the executive session. City council, city Prairie View will convene into executive session according to section five five one four.
He's gone, he's gone.
You seen the evidence? I got some P K's right there. You ready? Okay, so eleven oh six, eleven, yeah, nine oh six, eleven oh four, eleven oh four. Coming back into regular session from executive session to deliver on several issues. What's your pleasure on, I think it's one item that we need to take action on. Go out to personnel, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember.
I move that, based upon information given to us, I move that we hire Officer Kelly as a full-time police officer based on recommendation of our police chief.
Second. The move number seven, then we hire Officer Kelly based on the recommendation of our police chief. The motion, second, I'm ready for the question. All the favor came by saying aye. Those opposed? Is there any action before the council? Chair, entertain the motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn this meeting.
Second.
The move number seven, the reason.